All right, I think we could start our meeting of the committee, the whole. And when you're ready, Mr. Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Mr. Bowersox Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay, that's fine. At this time, is there a report from staff? We have a staff person called the Mayor, Mayor Pressing.
I just wanted to say that our Controller, Ron Eldridge, who's been with the city for many years and has been an excellent Controller, is retiring at the end of this month. And I'm going to have Bill Dejarnette be the acting Controller, which apparently does not require an actual appointment until June. He's a CPA, and I think he's, you know, very well qualified to do the job. So we're just going to try that for six months because he's also the Director of Information Services and try to see how that works.
Mm-hmm.
So just to let you know.
Interesting news, and of course, we sent our best wishes to Ron Eldridge, who's and his wife Connie, who are both retiring, and we have received their services for so many years, and we appreciate it a lot. There'll be more on that, I'm sure, next time around.
You didn't give me a latte.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of December 10th, 2012. Is there, first, are there any changes to the minutes or improvements? And does anybody want to make a motion for approval?
I move approval.
Eric Jacobson?
Robert moved in a second.
Oh, Robert, okay. Robert Lewis. Okay, were there changes or corrections? Have you already had a chance to look at those? Okay. All approving, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved now. All right. We have here quite a bit of public input, and I'm going to reverse myself. First, I'm going to ask members of council who have an item for public input to add that right now before we get the public going itself. So Diane?
Yes, I have a brief announcement. As you know, last year about this time, the City of Urbana joined First Lady Michelle Obama's Let's Move Initiative, which was the nationwide campaign to address the problems associated with childhood obesity and promote community health and wellness. Well, the National League of Cities partnered with the Let's Move campaign, and they have an initiative called Let's Move Cities, Towns, and Counties. And based on the action plan and responses to a survey that we sent in, I'm happy to announce that we've received bronze, silver, and gold medals in several categories related to Let's Move. And we were especially strong in the category related to providing opportunities for active living. And they recognized our efforts in our bicycling pedestrian facilities, safe routes to schools, mapping of place spaces, and having policies such as complete streets and some of our zoning policies. So it really is a recognition of some of the built-in sustainable policies and programs that we have going in the City of Urbana. So we'll be posting these on our website, and you'll be hearing more about it in the future. And we have opportunities to earn gold and silver medals in other categories as well. So we'll continue to work toward that.
Very good work and pretty exciting news. Others? Eric?
Yeah, I want to make a brief comment on an item that's been going back and forth in the news media and just add a different, another perspective to it. And this has to do with our tourism efforts. Because one of the things that hasn't really been commented on in these exchanges is what we are doing and the commitment that we have made through the Economic Development Division in this respect. And I've, I'm very impressed by the directions we're going. I'm impressed by the integration of tourism with attraction of people to come live here that's going forward. We've developed very good relationships, working relationship with the regional Lincolnland effort of the state effort. And I just think that, you know, it's not a question of who's right and who's wrong. It's a question of what was really the best use of our, the funds that are entrusted to us by the taxpayers to support this type of effort. And I'm very, very comfortable with the position we took that the very best use of this was to develop our own effort. And I'm really also very convinced that if there's any obstacle, if there are any obstacles to collaboration countywide, regionwide, and so forth, those obstacles are not on the part of Urbana.
Okay, thank you for that input. Now, we're going to invite the public to come up, and we have a couple of topics that seem to have a lot of people who are interested in them. And I'd ask the public, when they come up, of course, please come up when I call your name and identify yourself, give your name and your address. And you have four minutes for public comment. And if, please try not to reiterate what's just been said, but add to it if you can with some information that's new. So we're going to start with a popular topic tonight, which is the roundabout, which is on our agenda, discussion about dropping the roundabout at Windsor and Race Street. And we have several people who wanted to speak before the time, so I'm going to call Deborah Reardon to please come up. Give us your name and your address, where you live, and you have four minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Deborah Reardon, and I'm the President of Clark Lindsay Village at 101 West Windsor in Urbana. Do you need my home address?
No, that's fine.
Okay, that's good. I'm speaking on behalf of Clark Lindsay Village, which is a retirement community that serves 250 residents and also the 200 employees that work there, as well as the visitors that come on a daily basis. And I'm here today to express our support of the motion to drop consideration of the Race and Windsor at the roundabout, the roundabout at Race and Windsor Road. First, I want to start and thank the City Council and the staff for all the work they've done to investigate this as an option. And I wanted to share the own research we've done as a community. We have invited the city staff to our facility and had over 100 residents in attendance to hear and learn about the modern roundabouts. We initiated our own road trip to Carmel, Indiana, and experienced the roundabouts firsthand. We also interviewed residents at another retirement community that were located right next to the roundabouts. So our residents had a chance to talk with their residents. And then our residents, being the educated group they are, have done countless hours of research and discussion. And I go without saying, it is the most popular topic to be discussed at Clark Lindsay. So we appreciate all the effort. And after all that research, the overwhelming opinion of our residents is in opposition to the roundabout at Race and Windsor. Our concerns are primarily how it will affect our entrance to and from our main campus off of Windsor. And we're concerned that the roundabout will make it even more difficult to get in and out of the facility. So we're concerned about the safety. We're also concerned about the access, how the roundabout might impact the access of the semi-trailers that come to our facility on a daily basis to deliver our supplies. And as a taxpayer here in the City of Urbana, we're concerned about the extra $800,000 cost that the project would add to the improvements to Windsor Road. And those are our primary reasons for objection. Each resident has had their own personal experience with roundabouts, both the traditional roundabouts and the modern roundabouts. But I think that the primary concerns are what I've listed. So I thank you for listening and look forward to any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. If there is any questions for any of the participants, just raise your hand, and I'll try to add that to them. Thank you very much. A few more people would like to speak before our City Council takes up the discussion, so I'll call Tom Burns.
Thank you. Good to see you folks this evening. Appreciative of the opportunity to chat with you just briefly on this particular subject of the roundabout there at Windsor and Race. Some of you may be aware, I've been the Chairman of the Board for Clark Lindsay Village for 34 years. Hard to imagine that from time to time. There's been a lot of changes in Clark Lindsay Village and our neighborhood since 1979, when we started in this facility. Many of the changes in the past, and I suspect there'll be more changes in the future yet to come. Many of you recall that when we were constructed at Windsor and Race, it was a two-lane oil and chip township road on both sides of the facility, and significant changes in the past. We were annexed to the city almost immediately, constructed in that process, and it has become one of the finest facilities of its type here in the United States, as identified by the U.S. News and World Report magazine that reviewed facilities like ours across the country. Notwithstanding that, we are one of the largest taxpayers in Urbana, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with you folks over time that goes along. The city has upgraded Windsor and Race significantly in the past, and we appreciate that, both what we've done in the past, and I suspect there'll be future improvements. One of the things we wanted to comment, you and Deb mentioned it as well, that we appreciate the staff from the city staff to undertake the evaluation, not just a cavalier sort of, do this or do that. No, they met with us, they talked with the staff, what we're going to do, what we're thinking about doing, how we were going to, how it would impact us. And I don't mean that in a negative way, not impact each and every one of you, but of the special residents that live here at Clark Lindsay Village, about 250 folks, so that's their home here in Urbana. And we appreciate the special effort that those folks made to talk with us, listen to us, understand what was going on. We appreciate the city's special staff, for lack of a better phrase, to look at the intersection and the opportunities for improvements in the future, not just a cavalier, once again, but that's thoughtful and how we'll deal with that. And one of those issues, one of those contemplated opportunities, was the roundabout, which is relatively new in some respects, relatively new in this part of the world, but certainly not a concept that's unbeknown in the rest of the world. And we appreciate that. One of the elements that you folks can understand fully, those of you who have been by there recently and look at it from time to time, obviously that if there's any land that needs to be acquired, we don't have any anymore. We've used our site that was constructed in that fashion in order to, our last improvement in that part of the world dealt with the Meadowbrook Healthcare Facility, which is at the corner of the site, right at the intersection. So if there's any more land that's needed, we don't have any to sell. It's not a matter of, wouldn't be a good idea, a bad idea, they're just not available to do that. You folks will continue to improve and think about improvements at the intersection of Race and Windsor, and we appreciate the staff that we'll get, as staff goes on, on what we're going to do there. And we appreciate your, we think it is about to be, your formal approval of this decision to downgrade or no longer consider the utilization of a roundabout in any respects, to make a conclusionary sort of decision. One of the things that you can understand, and you will see as time goes on in the near future, that we have to plan on what we're going to do and what's going to happen at Clark Lindsay Village, both on the two main roads on each side, both on the west and on the north, understanding what you folks are kind of deciding, what the plan that you're undertaking will reflect on what we're going to do on what our site and what's going to happen for us. And so you'll see in the not-too-distant future that we're planning to do some things there at Clark Lindsay Village, and that we now know what you're going to do, if you understand that decision that we're hearing, that you making one, we get to make other decisions on what we're going to do. So you and we know where we're headed and what's going to happen. The city spent a lot of money on looking at this intersection, and they should have. It's a significant improvement, it's a significant thought, it's relatively complex.
You have one minute, Mr. Burns.
I'll finish quickly, easy enough. We appreciate your evaluation of the concepts and the opportunities, and we appreciate your careful understanding of the impacts that it makes on us here at Clark Lindsay Village. Thank you.
Any questions for Tom? Yes.
So I guess this could be directed to either you, Tom, or to previous speaker, or both. Do you have, does Clark Lindsay have other specific thoughts or requests or concerns about the design of that intersection? That is, vis-à-vis number of lanes, center islands, or, you know, traffic lights versus stop signs or so forth? Have you, have you all considered that and want to advise us on that?
Yes, we have, and in the past, we've spoken with the city engineering staff about that. We can provide that data to you on a longer forum to talk about that. Yes, there are some concerns, our relatively special, shall I say, people coming in and out. We have had some concerns with the stop signs and the way that the traffic moves through that area in a, as we call it, a metered system. People come and stop, and then they move forward. Traffic signal, we may be actually safer for us because it will platoon the traffic so that there'll be gaps, so that the residents that wanted to come out of Clark Lindsay Village will have an opening that they can take their turn to get on, whether it's east or west. And so we can provide that information to you folks. We've been undertaking some traffic studies of our own in order to understand how that would help us in the future, and we'll work that with the city staff.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom. We have another person who would like to talk about the topic before the City Council begins, and that would be Helen Satherwaite. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Helen Satherwaite, and I live at 101 West Windsor, which is Clark Lindsay Village. As you have heard, we don't really have excess property. And so in the conversations about the possibility of a roundabout, the only thing that would have seemed acceptable would be moving the roundabout to the west, because otherwise we would be in people's bedrooms, essentially, in Meadowbrook Park, Meadowbrook Health Center. But the biggest concern that I hear expressed by our residents is that they fear that with a roundabout, the traffic coming along Windsor Road will have no real pause. Now, at least, there is a stop sign, and you know that people are starting out from a zero speed, and so it takes them a little while to get up to speed, and getting out onto Windsor is not too difficult. Most of the residents feel that should the roundabout go in, they would be very reluctant to try to make a left turn out onto Windsor to go west. They think they would have to go east, probably down to Vine Street, and then up Vine to Florida or some other through street where they could again go west if that was what their destination was. And that, of course, puts some additional burden on some of the other streets. Remember that our average age at Clark Lindsay Village is 85. And while many of our residents still are very capable drivers, it's not easy for them to absorb changes. It's also not easy for them to think about a pedestrian crossing when there is no absolute stop to traffic. And they feel much safer crossing at the stop sign than they would feel if they were having to cross at a roundabout. We understand that roundabouts are not really very friendly to truck traffic. And of course, we see quite a bit of truck traffic on Windsor Road, and we have truck traffic coming into Clark Lindsay as well for our supplies, et cetera. And so if we were to have a roundabout there, the question is whether there is some alternative given to truck drivers for how they would negotiate that area. And I guess overall, the question that I hear, I didn't mention, I guess, that I'm currently President of the Residents Council, and so that's my voice in getting all the input from the people. The real question that I hear is what problem are we trying to solve? Because most people don't see that it is much of a problem to have an occasional delay at the stop sign, either early morning or late afternoon. Most of the time, there is not enough traffic for a backup, and so traffic goes very smoothly. It also doesn't look like a step of progress when we see that statistics show that there are two accidents per year on average at the stop signs, and that we could expect four accidents per year with a roundabout. And they're also concerned about the cost. The additional cost to put in a roundabout, it seems to us, would be better spent on upgrading some of the surrounding streets. We know it's a constant problem to try to keep up with the potholes and the other irregularities in streets, and we think it would be a better investment of the city's funds to take care of those first. And so just in closing, I would say that most of the residents would support motion listed as number nine on your agenda to drop consideration of the roundabouts. We appreciate your interest in trying to keep us up to date, but we think at this point that the negatives outweigh the positives.
Thank you, Helen. Are there questions? Okay, thank you very much. And we have one more person who'd like to speak before the time of council discussion on this topic, and that would be Carlos Donaldson.
My name is Carlos Donaldson, and I reside at Port 06 East Brookings Drive, Urbana, and I lived at that address 37 years and over 50 years in Urbana. First, I'd like to thank the Mayor for returning my call last week concerning the roundabouts at Windsor and Race on a timely matter. She got back with my call and left a message of what I wanted to speak to her concerning. As a graduate of University of Illinois Urban Planning, I've done a lot of surveys and studies. I hope the roundabout issue is dead, period, for Urbana residents. As the Mayor indicated in our conversation, if a contractor would come in and want to do a roundabout in a subdivision they are building, that's no problem, as I see it. You, as a resident of that subdivision, would know it would be there before you buy in that subdivision, and others that didn't use it or that didn't live in that subdivision or buy in that subdivision would not be affected, as those that bought, which you would know. And this roundabout, no one knew about it, and it's just a pop-up. And I hope that it's dead, period. And as the Mayor indicated me, I didn't realize until this morning, when I saw it in the paper, that it was really coming up to be a dead issue. I think that we, while I'm here, can I speak to the other issue that I have? I think that we should revisit the bike paths, safe route to schools, and not put that in areas not wanted or needed. An example is Washington Street, Philo Road, and Philo and Florida. If the city has money to spend, they should look at repairing the many roads needed repair because of potholes. They could use that money to hire more policemen to protect the entire city of Urbana, and or use the money for summer youth programs to create jobs to help their entire community. Look at the homes on Washington's that are up for sale. Is this the reason, the bike path? Elected officials should check with their constituents about certain things before they vote for them. They should go door-to-day and to events, talking to people before they vote on issues affecting Urbana residents, as they do when they are campaigning to get elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Yes, Eric?
I'm just impressed by the army of former eloquent, former elected officials who have come to address us tonight. So you guys have your act together for sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to switch topics here for a minute. We have a contingency from the Boy Scouts of America, and I can't read the name of the person who's going to come forward, but please do so at this time.
Thank you, members of the City Council. I'd like to introduce the members of Troop Six Urbana. These men are, these young men, I should say, are working tonight on their communications merit badge, and will also be working as part of being a member, attending tonight's meeting. We'll be discussing tomorrow night the topics that were on the agenda tonight, and we'll be discussing what a roundabout is and what your decision is tonight. Troop Six has been in Urbana for approximately 90 years. They started in 1922. And if you go down Philo Road between Washington and Florida, you'll see that Troop Six is responsible for the cleanup of that area. We chose that area specifically through the assistance of Urbana Public Works because we knew that was a blighted area. And I can assure you, the first few times that we did it, the number of citizens that would stop and talk to us and thank us for doing what we did was very heartwarming for the young scouts involved. I've noticed that as we've done this now for five times, I think, five or six, we do it three times a year, the amount of trash that we have on Philo Road has diminished considerably. In addition, the type of trash that we've been picking up, which was rather unique the first few times we did it, has now been brought down to simply gum wrappers. So we are making Troop Six, these young men here, we have approximately 87 scouts who have made it to the rank of Eagle. There are two sitting tonight, who this is one of the few merit badges that they have left. And so that in the next few months, they should be receiving their Eagle Scout awards. If they don't, there'll be a lot of discussion, I'm sure, from their parents that finished their projects. And I want to thank you all for allowing us to come tonight. If we leave en masse, it is not a reflection of anything that is going on here, but we do have young men and parents who need to get to bed, and they've got homework to do. So if we leave in the next few minutes, it's not anything personal, it's just I've got to get these guys back home. So thank you very much. I'm sorry, my name is Mark Medlen. It's M-E-D-L-Y-N, I'm sorry. And so thank you all for letting us come tonight.
And does any of those two Eagle Scouts who are waiting to get the one last merit badge want to make any comments to the City Council at this time?
One of them won't. I know one of them will not. The other one will not either.
This is your, this is your big opportunity to communicate now.
They're horribly shy. Both of them are horribly shy. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're, yes, you're off the hook, it's just nice to see you, though. Mayor Pressing?
Yeah, I just want to thank the scouts for cleaning up, and it really makes a point that if you have a place that looks good, people start respecting it. So you've made a difference, and we really appreciate it.
That's, I'd say, right. Yes?
Well, as the parent of an Eagle Scout who was a member of Troop Six and the wife of a guy who was scout master of Troop Six, I want to say special congratulations to all the scouts and to the parents of the almost Eagle Scouts, because I know exactly how hard you've worked. So congratulations all.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, you guys went farther than I did. I just became a lion. And I think I had two extra merit badges, and that's where I stopped.
Eric?
Yeah, just, I don't have anything really new to say, except that it's really wonderful to sort of back-to-back have these bookends where we can to sort of back-to-back have these bookends where we can kind of pay our respects to the views of those who have been here for a very, very long time, and essentially respect our elders, although they're not a lot older than I am, actually. But also, just really see what the hope of the future is in terms of the efforts that you guys have contributed to making your community better and developing your own skills and your own character and your own leadership. So that's, people sometimes ask me if this, doing this stuff every week isn't boring and tedious, and every once in a while, it's really great. And tonight, tonight, it's really great to see this.
All right, very good. Okay, thanks, Scouts, for showing up. I hope to see you around. All right, we've got two more topics here to cover before council begins taking up the programs. This is the opportunity for Carlotta Donaldson to come forward. The topic is safe routes to school.
Okay, Carlotta Donaldson, 406 East Brookins Drive in Urbana. The last couple of days has been a pleasant surprise to see Urbana news on the front of the newspaper, but this morning was especially pleasant to see the front page. Now, although I'd already seen the amended agenda, it was great that citizens were able to see it in print for themselves. And I hope that they are tuned in tonight or later online to hear what is really going on with the roundabouts at Windsor Road and Race Street. So I say thanks to the mayor and whoever else was behind this change. Maybe on issues affecting many, we can do the same thing. Might not be a bad idea to put the information out there, possibly on the front page of the local newspaper. Now, the safer routes to school, there was resident comment made and information left at the October Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, I think I've said that right, meeting that was not approved until the December eighteenth meeting, as well as questions and concerns that the Urbana Police Chief had from that same October meeting, not even addressed in December. This was just one of those things that was going to go regardless of how it affected those in the community. It didn't seem like anyone cared about those directly affected by the bicycle paths around Wiley School, though there was a suggestion that the vacancy now on the, and I'm gonna just abbreviate BPAC, includes, include a member from the Urbana schools. That does make sense, but it's kind of late now, since we did not listen to these same parents and school employees, and it's already a done deal. Information was left at the October meeting by a resident on behalf of others affected, and not even discussed or considered. And I did ask at a previous meeting at the end of last year, and I'm still wondering along with other residents in the area, when and how would the bicycle paths be created around Yankee Ridge School? That is in the safe routes to school plan as well, but nothing specific has been relayed to the residents about that in the area. Housing is my next concern. Do we know where the people who lived in the Lierman Street apartments are? Are they in other parts of the city? Are they on the street? I do know that Stone Creek Church with the residents and Urbana Police have done a wonderful job in cleaning up that area, and of course, other parts of the city, but where did and do those people go? They had children, where did they go? Just a concern that quite a few people are wondering. Special thanks to Charlie Smythe, a discussion we had on email this morning, which leads me to my monthly plug, Soul Food Junkies film, the Independent Lens Community Cinema screening. It will be on TV tonight at nine o'clock on WILL, Channel twelve, thirteen for cable, and it, of course, will be screening tomorrow evening at six o'clock at the Champagne Public Library with a panel discussion immediately afterwards. And in response to Ms. Marlin, First Lady Michelle Obama, her Let'sMove.org organization is featured in that film as well, so I do thank you for mentioning that. One other thing, just want to remember or remind people to support the many wonderfully planned Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. events this weekend and the rest of the month. The last day to register to vote and/or change your name and address for the February twenty-sixth primary election is Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, and I believe absentee voting begins this Thursday, the seventeenth. And we must remember that no matter how hard we try, and I can't remember, I believe it was Eric who brought up about the tourism, we may be separate cities, but we have to remember that Urbana and Champagne residents really support each other with their business. So I hope that we try to find ways to keep working together and hope that everyone is responsible for pulling their own weight, but then in the event that it seems that it's one-sided, it really isn't. We do actually work together. Thanks.
Thank you very much, also. Okay, there's one more, there's a question?
Yeah, question.
Yes.
Carlotta, Saturday is National Day of Service in memory of Martin Luther King. I'm having trouble finding local events that are...
You didn't get my email? I'll send it to you again.
Is there a local listing of what people can do to volunteer next Saturday?
There's, I think, a website within. I'll send the information to you.
Okay, I missed that. Yeah, we should send that out and let people know, and maybe we can get it on...
And I've been using the News Gazette as well, Sunday or Saturday, but I'll send it to you tonight.
Okay, well, we should get it up on the city website, then.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. The last person who wanted to speak before council discussion starts is Carol McCusick.
Carol McCusick, nineteen oh seven, North Cunningham, about municipal electric aggregation. I've spoken twice on December tenth to two different meetings, December seventeenth and December twenty-first, and then January first, I started with questions and on municipal electric aggregation and reasons for to have a city council presentation, agenda item that would. And I defended that format, pretty much got through that part of my essay on January seventh, and it said, but this presentation would go over how the city of Urbana municipal electric aggregation program has transpired, answering the questions in the context of the history of it last year, two thousand and twelve. And I have questions that fall into three areas, legal questions, utility questions, and financial and administrative questions. Oh, darn. Okay, on the seventh, it's at, in the petitions and commu, where to find the first part that I put in, I don't know, on the seventh, was in petitions and communications from thirty-four on the slider to about fifty. Sounds like I talked too long. But, okay, the, where I myself am going with this is I'm concerned that the deal we signed, that we're signed up with is like kind of ringing value out of the earth, and, you know, I wanna know if there's a, what, I want us to find out about the monies that are involved in it, and the consulting monies and things, and this money that the city has gotten from it, and is their part of the fee, and see if we can use that to educate ourselves about the electrical grid, about what is possible, and what the real effects of the extra dollars in the pocket are that we didn't have time to look into, and we, because of the, you know, to get, getting, getting the good deal. And, okay, so the, I'll just mention two, like, questions that are at kind of a nexus of legal and utility questions, for example, in a contract with Home Field, and who is the alternative retail electric supplier that we have? Now, yes, I urge you to, to, like, these questions, there isn't like a public bulletin board or a blog or something online that we could put them up there, you know, people in the community could, so that, like, the consultant and the supply, Home Field and the various city officials could prepare for a presentation. Not the only one, I'm sure, who has questions. So for, I'm kind of, okay, well, the question at the nexus of legal and questions...
You have one minute, Ms. McCusick.
And utility questions would be, in the contract with Home Field, and this is like kind, might be kind of a technicality, but under vendor services, it says the vendor shall be capable of providing the supply mix in Exhibit A. Well, I'm taking, Exhibit A was the, it's the confirmation of the accepting, the retail power price of point oh four oh five five, and it says that, that it's a hundred percent renewable energy. So if technically, they have to be able to provide a hundred percent renewable energy to us, then we, maybe we have a legal leg to stand on, techn, I'm just wondering. So that would be, and then another nexus question was, or, okay, could I have a little more time?
If anybody wants to make a motion for her to have more time? I think I don't see any. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your input. So the rest of the individuals who have sent me notices concerning input either want to speak at the time or are just indicating that there is, that they support, but they do not wish to speak, and I'll read those when we get to the topic. So we're gonna go now to the first item on the agenda that is beyond public input, and that was the discussion of the Ellis Subdivision Sanitary Sewer. Let's have a presentation from Public Works. Is that gonna be Mr. Gray? Bill Gray?
First of all, I want to make a big apology to council and members of the public. We don't have a formal presentation tonight, but I'll relay a variety of information pertinent to the discussion I heard last Monday, but in two weeks, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation to be a little more descriptive and visual for people to understand what I'll probably try to verbalize tonight. So just to respond a little bit to some of the comments that we heard last week, and this is in no particular order, but something to get us all thinking about. First of all, it's important to understand that there is a hierarchy among sewers, like there is in streets and anything else, and that hierarchy is usually the largest diameter sewers are what we call interceptor sewers, and those sewers are typically and historically in least Champagne or Urbana owned, maintained, repaired by the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District, okay? The next class of sewers, and they're public sewers, publicly owned, are collector sewers or by definition collector sewers, and those are typically more in the eight-inch to ten-inch diameter sanitary sewers that literally collect the wastewater discharged from a home or business and route that sanitary sewer water to the interceptor sewers, which ultimately get treated at the wastewater treatment plants. And last but not least is the sewer pipe that connects from the home to the public sewer. We refer to those as a sewer lateral, and typically, that's a six-inch diameter pipe, it may be four-inch, it could vary in between there, but specifications today wouldn't call out for a six-inch internal diameter for that pipe or lateral. As was correctly understood in comments last week, and per our city ordinances, a lateral that pipe from the public sewer to a home or business is owned and maintained by a property owner. That's the property owner maintenance responsibility. Now, there was several comments made about the sewer on Ellis Street or in this subdivision that were in the wrong location. I'd like to clarify that and let for folks in Urbana realize and know that actually, we do not want a sanitary sewer down the middle of the street. We do not want a sanitary sewer in a backyard. We really do want a sanitary sewer on one side of the street or the other for a variety of purposes, cost, ease of access, maintenance, et cetera. So literally, in our subdivision and development codes, we do want that pipe, if you will, behind the curb, between the curb and the property line. So I just wanna clarify that, that that sewer is not in a wrong or bad location, per se. Now, what it does mean, and this is true, is that depending on what side of the street a home or business is, it may be a shorter distance to that public sewer. Now, going back to, I think, oh seven, we did have a discussion similar to what we had last Monday night, in that many residents in the community expressed concern about the large cost to repair that sewer if it's been broken down. In this case, the example given was the sewer obviously has some joint separations or cracks, and there was tree roots in it, and the tree roots were so dense that it literally stopped the sewage from flowing from the home into the public sewer. For information, it got rotted out slightly to allow flow again, but really, this is a recurring problem that at some point, depending on how bad the root system situation might be, you have to ultimately dig it up or else have it rotted out, you know, once or twice a year. But anyway, yes, those repairs across the street are very expensive, and we get those inquiries multiple times a year. City council back then, understanding that, and also understanding that the maintenance of a lateral is a homeowner's responsibility, was sensitive, sympathetic to that higher cost, and chose at that time to come up with a policy that said essentially this, the city will pay for that extraordinary cost in the streets, in the right-of-way area that would help pay for the cost of the concrete, asphalt, backfill, traffic control, that sort of thing, on a fifty percent cost share basis, not to exceed three thousand dollars. We've not changed or upped that three thousand dollar amount, but we do pay fifty percent. Now, on average, since that policy went into effect, we probably do eight to ten to twelve such reimbursements a year, and we stay pretty much within our budget of about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. The twenty-five thousand dollars that we reimburse such property owners throughout the city, not just in the north part of town, but throughout the city, these situations occur, are reimbursed, or I should say, the revenue side is the sewer benefit tax that we all pay if you have a home or property in the city. So when you pay that monthly or every other month bill, sewer benefit tax, a portion of that pays for this twenty-five thousand dollar line item where we reimburse property owners. So I think, and we could provide more graphics, but I think the issue for council consideration on the twenty-eighth is this, does the city council want to continue with the policy as is, which is a fifty percent reimbursement for the extraordinary costs for that sewer line that crosses the street, up to a maximum reimbursement amount of three thousand dollars? Or do we want to change that to a higher reimbursement amount, although it's my understanding that typically, we don't even push up against over three, fifty percent, or greater than three thousand dollars, but it's still something we can look at? Or do we want to reimburse a higher amount? You need to think about that, though, from the standpoint that if we go to a higher amount, say a hundred percent, that might not keep the pencil as sharp for contractors that provide bids, and you may need to think about that. But anyway, I understand the shock of a repair that can be six, five, six, seven thousand dollars. Sometimes you have to replace the whole sewer line across the street, sometimes it's a point repair, or it's a five, six, seven, eight-foot diameter piece of pipe that's bad. It depends on the circumstances. But this is a snapshot of what the issue is before us, is do we want to consider a higher reimbursement and a higher percentage to help homeowners anywhere in the city pay for a extraordinary cost when their sewer lateral, depending on where they live on the street, when they have to dig up in the street and pay that extraordinary cost because it's street reconstruction, which is much more expensive than digging up the dirt or flowerbed in the front yard.
Okay, before we have, well, I think before we have council interact and discuss here on the bench, we'll invite the three individuals who wanted to speak at the time to do public input on the Ellis Subdivision Sanitary Sewer Lines.
And I just want to clarify that we'd be happy to talk about this in more in-depth next... next, in two weeks. I went through this very quickly, but I just want to give you a kind of overview.
Right. Charlie, do you want to speak first?
No, mine's a question for Bill while he's, while he's here, while it's fresh in my mind. One of the things that, that I'd like to know about is, is the new technology that involves basically just horizontal boring that, that replaces the existing tile with the replacement pipe without having to tear up the ground above. Is that applicable, and can we find out if that's applicable and more cost effective for, for going under streets as party report in two weeks?
It is applicable. I can tell you right now, it is applicable. Some homeowner, homeowners do choose that methodology, but it's still expensive. But we can talk more about that.
Yeah, I guess it might be more.
For lateral, you can give and sit you repairs.
Yeah, so it might be more expensive, but if it means not having to rip open the road, you know, does, do you, you know, if you have to rip across the whole road and it's going to cost you six to $10,000, do you regain, you know, do you save a lot more money by?
We'll try to answer that next week.
Okay, thanks.
And maybe I'm going to ask a question about it now, too. The other technique for repairing a sewer would be to be using polyethylene lining or some kind of plastic lining?
Yes.
Is that applicable for such small diameter?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to have things to learn about in the future that might be useful answers. All right, now I'm going to invite the public to come up, and then we'll come back to discussion, this further on council. Ether Reed, she would like to come up to talk about this topic.
You said it's three people.
That's correct.
You want two of them to speak.
Do you, if you, it's also Reverend Ethel Underwood and Bishop King James Underwood. So if there's somebody who'd rather speak first, you have the choice of.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. I'm here to speak about the.
Have a look.
Conditions that we have there in Ellis subdivision, and it's, it is very complicated. And we are having problems time after time with this situation. And it's been doing, going on down through the years, but as the years progress, I understand that as trees gets older, they have the roots get bigger and it causes more problems. Now, the trees that are there are sitting between, in the, on city property, actually, and the trees belong to the city. Those are the roots that's growed into the sewage that have blocked the sewage. But still, we are the ones that's supposed to pay to go over across the street, including cutting up the street, what I'm told, to get all of this work done. I think that's a unfair cost to the residents when we're taxpayers. And this has been like, the subdivision is like about 50 years old, and the trees are old, like I said, and the roots are getting real big. And so that mean now is doing this, now what is going to be looked at further down the line. And I witnessed something during Thanksgiving morning. My granddaughter had just purchased a home up in there, and she was so happy, she wanted the whole family to come over. She had red tables and set it up downstairs and everything. We all got there and met this stinking odor. Right just before dinnertime, the sewage had bagged up in her lower level where we was going to dining in the big family area down there. And this was the sewage domain next door, had had someone over that night. And because he rotted out his sewage, schooner says that have a lot up there. When they scoot out one door, it runs over to another. She had had no slow drain or anything until the main next door had his done, they'd come up in her basement. And in lower level, it was just, it was terrible. And we go, see, a lot of people are going through that. It's not just, you know, one person. It's from one place to another, and we've been, I didn't know that it was, it was going to get worse, and it has gotten worse now. I've been there for the whole 50 years that they've been up there, that we've Ellis Division been there. And I think this is unfair for taxpayers to have to bear all this burden. And I hope you can come up with a better ass solution than we bearing this responsibility of it totally.
Are there any questions?
I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your input. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood?
This is so unfortunate. Oh, I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. 1309 West Tremont Street, Urbana. A lot of people didn't get an opportunity to talk. They didn't understand the process. Are all the city sewer line placed on private property throughout the city? Please provide mapping of the whole city sewer lines. Please provide lists of homeowners reimbursement paid by the city. Now, they want an answer to this question. So did you get, somebody get that? Are all city sewer lines placed on private property throughout the city? Please provide mapping of the whole city sewer line. Please provide lists of homeowners reimbursement paid by city. When I heard this gentleman, I don't know who he is, talking, I hope someone who got a background will rectify what he's saying, because I don't think he's giving the full I have a copy of the ordinance, and I don't know, that's why I need to know which ordinance is he, ordinance is he talking about. Ordinance number 2007 hyphen 12 hyphen 138, establishing a council policy regarding a reimbursement program for illegal connections of private sanitary sewer service lateral to the storm sewer system and repair of sanitary and storm sewer service laterals. If this is not it, we need to know what is. A policy regarding illegal connections of private sanitary sewer service laterals to the storm sewer system and repairs to sanitary and storm sewer service laterals. If, if this is not the policy we should be looking at, we need to know what is, given what I said last week. Here's my comments. We, the residents, homeowners of the Dr. Ellis subdivision, believe that the mistakes and flaws the city's forefathers allowed the developers to not take responsibility for during the building of our subdivision about 50 years ago should not be rectified. The main, I don't know what the three he's talking about, but we went all through Ellis Drive this, today, my husband and I drove all through there. We drove other parts of the city. And my husband is an expert. He helped build it, and I hope he talk when he gets up here. The main should have been placed in the middle of the street. And I know we saw something in the middle of the street, and I hope my husband tells this gentleman what was in the middle of the street. And you give him the time to do it. Not on the north side of the street, on the property of the homeowners, which we saw today. The homeowners who live on the south side of the street, in order to hook up their sewer line up to the main quote unquote, or the T quote unquote, must run their lines outside of their property parameters through the city of Urbana Public right-of-way. In parentheses, sidewalk on the side side, public street, and all the way beyond the sidewalk on the north side of the street, even onto the homeowner's property on the north side of the street in order to hook up to the quote main, unquote. I'm not angry, I'm just doing emphasis. Of the T. We need an ordinance, ordinance to reflect our unique situation in Dr. Ellis subdivision. Ordinance number 2007 hyphen 12 hyphen 138, quote, establishing a council policy regarding a reimbursement program, which I just stated, does not. If there is a general ordinance on this subject matter, then we need an amendment to it or a quote council policy, unquote, to speak specifically to our unique situation, and thus the following request. Quote, the city of Urbana should pay all the costs incurred for repairs, comma, materials, comma, and labor to the sewer line, including removal and replacement of street pavement, comma, sidewalks, comma, curves, comma, from the sidewalk on the south side of the street to the sidewalk on the north side of the street where the main is. Now, if it's the west side or the east side, then the same should apply. We should not have to go from the south side all the way across the street to get to the main and tear up the street. Now, Ray Charles know better than that. I'm talking about the blind Ray Charles.
You have, you have one minute left, Dr. Underwood.
Okay. I could go on, but do you have any questions? Did anybody understand what I'm saying?
Okay.
We will do our part from our house all the way to the sidewalk. And then the city right away, the city, that's why we pay taxes. The sewer benefit tax, sanitary sewer construction fund, the sewer repair budget, and when I look at my taxes, Bill, we pay that. Now, but we shouldn't have to tear up the street, nor should, like one of our neighbors, he shouldn't have had to go all the way under the street. Plus, I talked to him tonight, he's got pneumonia. He couldn't come. His daughter was here last week, but she was unable to come tonight. And he, she explained it. When he got, had the gentleman to go under there, this professional, he found out that his next door, next. Y'all both are giving me a little.
I, I think we did get the message.
Huh?
I think we did get the message.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments here at the moment to direct it to Dr. Underwood? Okay, we, thank you very much for your input. And the gentleman that you were referring to here, that just spoke to us earlier, he's the director of Public Works. Mr. Bill Gray. All right, we have one more person who wants to speak at the time, and this is Bishop King James Underwood.
Mrs. Mayor, and to the council people, I would like to say my name is Bishop King James Underwood, and I'm a resident of 1309 West Tremont Street, Urbana, on the south side of the street. And I would like to say to you that when you levy taxes, everybody pay the same amount of taxes. And when you're putting in sewer mains, it should be set up in a way that each person get equal access, or it should be something set up that the person that has to pay the extra amount will not have to pay the extra amount because we have already paid the taxes for this work. And if the city has the right-of-way, when it comes to trimming trees, they tell you that you have to get a permit for the city to come out and to trim your trees. And it's on the city right-of-way. So if they have that authority, they should have the authority to pay for those things that occur on their right-of-way. So I'm saying to you today that we need to have something that's fair and make it equity for all people, not just some people. The people on the north side of the street, they pay the same amount of taxes that we pay. And I'm saying that you ought to have it fixed if we have to go across the street, rather than in the center of the street where we will have equal access to the, to the main. You're thinking about the expenses it's going to cause you to repair, repair that main. And I'm saying to you, you passing the expenses on to us for your convenience. And I don't think that's fair for us to pay for what need to be equal access to the main, and we got to go across the street. Just because you said the ordinance says, and if you made the ordinance to say that, that from the house to the T hookup, the homeowner is responsible, and you put the main on the other side of the street, and the homeowner have to, on the south side of the street, have to go across the street in order to do the hookup, and the ones on the north side, that's inequity. But if you put extra tax on the ones on the north side of the street, that's still unfair because they paying as much tax as anyone else. When you get rid of the levy tax, you never see that, that this person have to pay this and you make the taxes different. You make it equal across the board. Everybody paid the same amount of taxes. So what I'm saying to you, we need to get the same amount of, of, of work and, and access from the city. When they, when they make these assessments, we pay it. And when it come down to work, we need to receive equal amount of time and equal amount of pay for the difference that we have to pay. If there's a difference between, between one side of the street to the other, according to, to the laws on the book, we supposed to pay from the house to the sidewalk. You need to change the ordinance that the homeowners need to pay from the, from the house to the city sidewalk, and from the city sidewalk to the main will be on the city, rather than to put tax that burden on the homeowners. The one owner is paying one, one thing, and one is paying another thing because where the main is. So when you talk about repairs, you're putting the burden of the repairs on the homeowners, no matter how far it is. You might put it, put it six blocks away, and if, if the ordinance say I have to pay from the house to the hookup, then, then that means I'm going to have to go that far in order to hook up. That's unfair and unfounded. And if you, if you put it on the other side of the street for convenience, then you ought to, ought to compensate the people on the south side of the street for, for the inconvenience that you causing them.
You have one minute. You have one minute, Bishop.
Okay, thank you. These are some of the things need to be taken in consideration to be fair and, and to have equity in the dealings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments? Eric?
Bill, do you have?
Bill, do you have access to the data that would tell us whether the reimbursement policy, the $3,000, whether that's at an appro, the right level to equalize on average the, the costs, the potential costs to people on the two sides of the street?
I think we'll take a look at that and try to come up with a response next, in two weeks.
And remember, this, this questioning at this time is to the, the, the person who's put the input in.
So, okay, well, I'll just make a comment, Bishop Underwood, or, or that, you know, I will certainly support, and I'm going to guess that the council will, will support a, a look at the reimbursement policy that we have with a view to ensuring that the liability will be equal for people on the two sides of the street. I, I, I'm certainly, in my case, I think that's where I want to go. And, and I, knowing the people on this council as I do, not having communicated with about this issue, but I'll, I'll bet that's where the council wants to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to read now a list of people who chose not to address the committee, but who have an interest in this topic. Coletta Donelson is in support. Shirley Hersi, um, Hersi, pardon me, also wants to register an interest. William Renford is in support. Carla Bright is in support. Reverend McClinda Carr is in support. And Tomiko Miller, registered support.
Yes, you indicated that you did not choose to address the committee, but wished to register a position by checking the bottom box. And your name. Yeah, I'm wrong. If you'd like to speak at this time, please do.
I wanted to know if.
Please sit down at the table and, and speak to the microphone and let us know your name and your address, please. We're doing this because it's on public television, and everybody wants to hear it at home as well.
Okay, my name is Shirley Hersi. I live at 1309 Ellis Drive, Urbana. And I just wanted to know. And I just wanted to know if when they built the houses, if they had the, if the builder had a building commit, I mean, permit, and if the inspectors came and inspected his work after he got done? Because nobody told us where the sewer was. So I just wanted to know if, if he was authorized, to put it like that.
We'll probably have that information next week when we have the report.
You're not going to, you don't have any information tonight about that?
I don't have, I don't think that we have records that we can look at at this moment to answer that question specifically.
But that, that's why we feel it's not fair.
Okay.
Because if he wasn't, if it wasn't inspected and he didn't have a building permit, or he didn't have a permit to do that, then I don't think we should be responsible for paying for any of that.
Very good. We'll, but we'll check on that very specifically.
Okay, you may.
Thank you. Okay, comments? Eric?
I, I just want to point out that I'm interested in this too because I live on the south side of my street.
Good reason. Brandon Barsocks, Johnson.
Yeah, Bill, I mean, one other question for two weeks from now that I would ask is, is there something unique about this neighborhood? That's unlike all the other neighborhoods in Urbana? Or is this the same situation that all neighborhoods deal with? I think, especially if something was done wrong or installed incorrectly in this neighborhood in a way that other neighborhoods don't face, it would help us to know that.
Okay, and then this is basically now council discussion, so we open it up.
I'll respond at this point.
Okay, Robert Lewis.
Well, a long time ago, in the 1960s or around that range, I worked very closely with the black architectural students at the University of Illinois and looking at various properties. And if you know that, kind of during this period of time, there's a couple of things that happened in our community, not only in Urbana-Champaign, but also in Chicago. Bagreany Green was developed. And there was a lot of interesting architectural issues that unfolded out of that. This goes way beyond what Bill ever had to deal with, whatever, but just for the history. It's, it's, it was a sad scenario because this is the oldest black housing project in the black community. From what I can glean, and this was from the records, and I don't know if they're accurate. I'd have to go back and really think through it all. But there was a number of issues during the process of developing this subdivision that seemed a bit odd at the time. We couldn't go underground and check it at the time, but we did make some observations. I know in some cases, the, the lateral, I believe, Bill, I think the one to go to the main on, on Ro Mine, did invade the front, front property of a house in some cases. So it kind of changed position. So it's, it's a lot of issues here that are. I know what Bill is telling us that on one side of the street is good for access, but in this particular case, it's kind of meandering, in a sense. And, and the people really weren't aware of what's underground because out of sight, out of mind. So when they bought into the subdivision, they didn't realize the kinds of issues that were really potentially about to happen. Additionally, Urbana is a city of trees, of big trees. And as far as, my understanding is, when, when I requested trees, for example, in front of my house, I had an old tree cut down and the arborist came out and he gave me a specific sized tree. He said, I don't want to get too big here because of power lines. And he gave me all this story about what kind of trees I can have around my house within the right of way. And I said, well, I'll go half with you on the trees and we'll put them out there or whatever. So they did that, but my responsibility was to make sure I watered them on a regular basis, and I did so. But these trees that they had put in, I'd say, ten years ago, would never have the kind of root structure I saw in these trees up in Ellis subdivision. And it was an accident waiting to happen. And now these trees are huge with great massive root structures, the maples, the oaks. And I don't know if you ever went down and tried to cut one out, I have. You put both of my arms together and that's, that's a root, okay? And they can overwhelm an antiquated infrastructure such as they have up there. If it were steel, it'd still be bent and bent up, probably. But in this case, it's probably a clay tile, which has some, some good resistance against compression loads. But unfortunately, nothing would hold up under a big tree. So thus you get it crushed and the roots get in the joints because they're just laid together. This situation I saw happen to my sister's house in Champagne, for example, similar problem. But in this case, the contractor, in lieu of clay tile, tried a new method. He used paper, which would last about fifteen or twenty years and then before it's collapsed. And it was tar paper. But in this case, they ran it laterally along the back part of the lot and they came out of the house and tied into it. So they had about twenty-five feet to get to it, but it was all paper. And it eventually just, no roots, no nothing, it just collapsed, okay, over time. And these are things that were going on back in the fifties and sixties that we probably didn't even know about was going on, out of sight, out of mind. Now, the people here are having to suffer some of the impacts of those kinds of experiments. Okay? And that's what this was, an experiment. And it didn't really work well, in my opinion. What I've gleaned over the time, I did look at the ordinances, I looked at what was there. It all seemed reasonable to me. But on the other hand, to allow, in one circumstance, I think Mr. Lewis, one of his daughters came and he's ill. But he ended up, in the total cost, he paid for not only the street repairs, his repairs, and the reseating of the lot across the street because they had to tear it up to get to the tee. And that's because of where it had to meander along the way. So I think they have a concern about equity, and I think that we need to address that. That's enough for me.
Okay, we just received one more person who'd like to come forward at this time to talk about the topic. William Renford? Would you please come forward? And I also have another person who I, Robert Gilner. And he didn't indicate which topic it was, he didn't fill in the topic line, but Robert Gilner, I thought probably was in the subdivision topic as well. All right, William.
Yes, thank you for letting me address the city council this evening. And the reason that I changed my position or to speak is because what this gentleman said here, I don't think is quite correct. Because I just had some construction done on my house and I had to tie into the city. Okay? It comes straight out of my house going north for about five feet, and it takes a hard left and goes all the way across the, the street. My neighbor across the street on the north side, she has, in her driveway, she has a storm drain. And then about four or five feet across the sidewalk, she has a sewer. Then if you go behind her garage, there is another storm drain. So why does she need all of these storm drains on one property? See, that's, and I, I never knew this until her brother lived there and he told me, he says, you know, there's another storm drain behind the garage. So it's, it's kind of messed up in, in that area. Another reason that I don't think that subdivision was laid out properly, properly is because the good soil, the top soil, was placed in the backyards where the backyards get real green. In the front yards, the dirt is, I mean, you really got to work with it. Now, I've lived in my house for thirty-three years, and we had a silver maple tree in the front yard. It was improperly planted at the time that it was planted because the roots ran all across the top of the yard, which basically killed the grass in the front yard. I had it cut down, but for years I was digging up parts of the roots for this. Now, the grass in the back, you could almost make a golf course out of it. Gets real green, grows, you have to almost cut it two times a week during the summer. And that goes for every, almost every house in that area. Across the street also. And that's basically all I've got to say.
Are there questions? Okay, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
And then we just have one more individual who has submitted a a paper indicating that they are in support of the topic, and that is Carol Ammons. So that closes the public input, and is there any more discussion on the topic of the LS subdivision sanitary service at this time? We're going to be seeing a report next week, I understand, in our, two weeks? Two weeks, okay, thank you. So, all right. No more discussion? Okay, Charlie?
Something, something that just struck me with the comments that were just made that one of the things we, we see here are changes in city codes over time, you know, and the development of codes. I mean, when my neighborhood was built, which is now pushing a hundred years, a lot of these, a lot of the regulations didn't exist at all. So, you know, and how, how to do stuff. And I know in different parts of the neighborhood, we have sewers on both sides. Some parts, it's down the middle of the road. In others, it's on one side or the other, as described. So one of the things that, that Bill might want to address is, is changes in, 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 in city code over time, and, and that may be adding to the confusion. We have lots of miles of each of the kinds of, you know, we have lots of, we have lots of miles of down the middle of the road of the, of the lateral versus on one side or the other. And like I said, in some neighborhoods, we have on both sides. So maybe, you know, there was a question about the map, and I know the map of the sewer system exists to the best of our knowledge of what's out there. And then the, the last thing I was going to say, the, the soil issue is sort of funny because it used to be that in some subdivisions, they used to come in and take the soil and just remove it completely and sell the top soil off, and all that you were left with was, was clay. So in this neighborhood, you may be lucky that the soil got pushed into the backyards. They just didn't redistribute it to the fronts. I know that was an issue that I, that we, I think we've changed in our code within the last five years so that, so that the top soil can't be removed from neighborhoods like that. So, so I'm just reminded of that, so thank you.
Okay, I think that closes this topic, and we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is ordinance number two thousand thirteen dash one, zero one dash zero zero three, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three to forty-three, increasing the number of class R2 liquor licenses for Anai Perez Horaches, let's see, Horaches Moroleon at eight oh five Philo Road. Who would like to lead this? Is this the mayor's? Okay.
This is a restaurant that is requesting a liquor license.
Okay, is there? Okay, it's been moved in second? City council?
City council.
Heather Stevenson, and seconded by Diane Marlin. Is there other discussion? Brandon Barsocks?
And Mayor, in this case, did the applicants pass the background check? Any other criteria that I know some of our other recent Philo Road applicants did not pass?
The ones that didn't pass, you never got to vote on. We take this very seriously. So they've passed every, every test.
Okay.
Fingerprints, background checks, the whole thing. And actually, we're, we're plugged into sort of a national search now, rather than just the state of Illinois.
Okay, so they come more or less recommended?
Yeah.
All right. Eric Jacobson?
They've got great reviews on Yelp, I'm going to have to try them.
There you go. And, and they're a local business, so let's. All right, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, that, that will be forwarded to city council with recognition of approval. Okay, number seven, update on the stormwater utility fee implementation phase. Brad, take it away.
Thank you, I appreciate being able to come and give you an update. I'll give a little background before I turn it over to Doug Knoll here from AMAC. But back in May two thousand twelve, the council approved moving ahead on the implementation of the stormwater utility fee. Our consultant, Doug Knoll from AMAC, has been diligently working on the, on the implementation. And what we're here today is to, first of all, give you an update at where we are with the process. The new fee kicks in on July first, two thousand thirteen. The first bills will go out sometime in September two thousand thirteen. And we had a couple billing policy issues that we wanted to get some feedback from council on how to proceed with. And those are what are in your council memo. So with that, I'll turn it over to Doug.
Thanks, Brad. Good evening. Wanted to go ahead and give you this, this quick update on the progress on the stormwater utility implementation. The implementation tasks basically are the development of the credit incentive program manual and training, the implementation of the actual billing plan, the development of the master account file, and, and working with the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district. Update on the public education and outreach activities and on the customer service assistance. Credit and incentive program task, basically two tasks in the implementation phase. The first task is complete, which was the development of the credit and incentives manual, which was approved by council on October first. And we're in the process of developing the training program that will be provided to both citizens for the incentive program and businesses and developers for the credit program. And that should be completed within the next couple of months, and then probably rolled out sometime in May, I would imagine. Billing implementation task, we've coordinated with UCSD, both with the city of Urbana and with the city of Champagne. Champagne's first bill will go out about two billing cycles before Urbana's. So we've been running in front with Champagne, addressing a lot of the issues that we found with merging the, the property data that we've got for the, the billing of properties in Urbana and with Champagne with the data that UCSD uses for its wastewater billing. So we've, we've identified most of the issues there. With the Champagne data, we're probably a week away from being complete with, being ready to deliver their billing file. And have addressed a lot of the quirks in the data for them that will also exist in the data for Urbana. The impermeable service database, the digitizing of all the properties was completed, and I believe we talked about that about two months ago. And I'm going to get the right one eventually. Master account file completion, we've, we've made the first pass on incorporating, or matching the data from the property data file with the UCSD data. We're about fifty percent complete with that, and we're waiting to address the specific issues with the data till after we've gone through it completely with the city of Champagne, since we do have the luxury of some extra time. And then we're also going to be providing Public Works with a maintenance plan for the data. One of the things that you, that you One of the things that you inherit along with setting up a program like this that's based on imperviousness is the need to keep your data up to date so that you know what you should be billing. Newly developed properties, properties that redevelop, properties may reduce their impervious footprint, depending on how they redevelop old developed properties. So we'll be providing information and guidance on how to keep the data sets up to speed. Public education and outreach tasks, we're providing information to the city to look at for a mailer that'll go out to potential ratepayers in a couple of months, probably May. There are some meetings that have been in progress with some ratepayers, particularly with the university. We're working on the development of a frequently asked question or FAQ guide that can be utilized both by public service for telephone questions once billing would begin and be put on the website so that people can find out information about, about the user fee directly from the website, and providing information about how customer service would pass off calls that come in to, for technical answers or more fundamental billing questions to be answered. We've got some, some things that we would like, or three issues we would like to get a little bit of input from council on tonight. These are all fairly straightforward issues, we think. But since you guys were elected to create policies, we want to make sure that you get the opportunity to do that. One of the things that we're looking at, and this has come up in Champagne as one of the issues we dealt with over there also, was the desire to be able to group the bills for properties with more than one physical property, such as Park District, city of Urbana, other entities that have more than one property. There are billing groups that can be made in the UCSD billing system, where it'd be easier for, actually desirable for some of these entities to get one bill that enumerates the multiple properties, so they can just write one check periodically to pay their utility bill.
But point out that the city falls in that group too, and we pull multiple properties across, and it would be easier for us to get one bill and write one check. So we fall in that grouping as well.
The second issue is that when you look at condominium type properties, you end up, you have two situations. You'll have some condominiums that each have a water meter, which makes it easy to build them. You have some condominiums where there's what's referred to as a master meter, which you'll have multiple units that get a single bill to their homeowner association or some centralized address, and then they dole out those costs as part of the homeowner association dues, or they may have an internal process for collecting those utility bills. What we were proposing and what we've looked at with UCSD is that for those units that have their own water meters, we would build them similar to any other single-family residential unit in the city, send them a bill for one ERU. And then for those that are on a common meter, go ahead and send them a bill that would be more like, like what it would be done for a commercial or multifamily type of unit, where you send a bill based on the measured ERUs. And that way reduces the cost to the city and the UCSD for the billing, because it's more consistent with the way they bill now. Then also grouping for ratepayers that own adjacent parcels, where one parcel may have a water meter and the other parcel doesn't. We've got some examples of what those would be. Turn, tend to be both residential properties and non-residential properties. In this case, you've got a house that owns an adjacent property. The way that the ordinance is written, both those properties would get into a separate bill, one ERU for the house and a half ERU for the adjacent property. In the case of a house, in this particular instance, and then also in this example, if they had gone through the process of joining those two parcels, they'd be just getting a single bill for one, single-family residential property, the way the ordinance is read, they would be getting two bills, one for one ERU and one for a half ERU. So we want advice as to whether or not we want to build a half ERU for that additional parcel or not. And then also, on the non-residential side, you have examples like this, as I believe Hot Walk, where you have a property that is only being used for parking that doesn't have a water meter on it, and it makes more sense to send the bill, combined bill for both parcels to one property as opposed to the strict read of the ordinance, which would indicate that you send one to each individual parcel. So.
All right, then that is the presentation. Is there a commentary or a discussion? Charlie, do you want to start, and then I'll go to Diane?
Yeah, I think these are no brainers, except for one thing I just heard and didn't quite catch. Is there a question of not charging a half for some of these properties?
In the case of the residential, the question is, would we, would we treat them as if it was one large residential property, or go ahead and bill for the half ERU for the adjacent lot that?
Okay, so, yeah, so that's the one thing that's significant. The rest are all no brainers. Okay.
Diane Marlin?
Yeah, that was, that was the same concern I had. I guess it depends on if that adjacent lot has a parking lot on it or a yard. I mean, it's kind of hard to justify charging a half ERU for a place with no impervious surface. But yes, you could chart, it would make sense to charge if it was a parking lot.
You can have a wide variety of imperviousness on that adjacent property. You may have some properties that have a large garage, that have a garage and a patio, or, or any number of things that are on that piece of property. But then you'll also find some properties where you've got a house that sits, you know, a single house, and it's sitting on both sides of the property line. So we're just looking for your input on how to address those as we, as we start to get into the, addressing these issues for the city of Urbana.
Are these policies the same as the city of Champagne's? Are they consistent with what?
Champagne doesn't have a minimum bill for, where you would charge a minimum bill for a vacant lot. So if the lot, in the case of the first residential property, if the lot was vacant, they wouldn't be billing it at all if it has less than 500 square feet of impervious area on it.
Mayor Pressing?
Yeah, that was the question I was going to ask. If there isn't a water bill on a piece of property, is it going to get billed for the storm?
It's going to get billed, in some cases it would. In the case of, like, for instance, for Hot Walk, the parking lot, it has actually two parking lot parcels, and one parcel that's got the building. Two parking lot parcels don't have a water meter on them.
What if it's just a vacant lot?
It's just a vacant lot, right now they would get billed for a half an ERU for, is the minimum charge. The thought there is they are getting some services. So if it's a vacant lot that's not, doesn't have a contiguous owner, or if it has an out-of-town owner, somebody who's invested in property and may or may not build a house on it or put a business on it sometime in the future, they are receiving some services, such as the MPDS permit applies from city line to city line. It doesn't just apply to developed properties.
So it has to be a separate billing system from what the sanitary district is using right now? There's going to be more things in it?
Yeah, there will, there will be some parcels that are what we would call stormwater-only parcels that'll get a bill just because they're, they're in the city and receiving these services. So that bill may be half an ERU, or if it is developed, maybe it doesn't have a water, it may have a parking lot that has an owner but no water account, that has seven or eight or 10 ERUs on it. So that will definitely get a bill.
Thank you.
Brandon Barsocks-Johnson?
Yeah, I think the only fair way is to, is to bill them for that half ERU. I mean, as you said, they still get the benefit from that. If somebody owns two lots and has a big house and a bunch of space, even if it's just green space, they're still benefiting from the stormwater system across the whole city. We've gone through this whole process without making exceptions. You know, even the city's paying the bill. All the governmental units are, everybody is, and I, I just think we should continue with that policy of not making exceptions. Combining the bill, as was described in the memo here, all three recommendations in the memo make total sense to me. We should combine that bill and send it on one bill. But I don't see a reason why we would try to craft an exception here.
I've got a question myself, and then I'll come up, back to Diane. The, my understanding was that for the residential units, we weren't trying to evaluate the amount of runoff, that there was going to be a one-fits-all generic fee? And are you telling me that now that, that we are evaluating them because there are adjacent lots? Or have I got that wrong? I thought we weren't going to evaluate each individual property because the database would become gigantic and hard to keep up.
Yeah, I mean, you're correct. For, for the residential, we do have a flat fee. But there is, there is a minimum threshold of the half ERU, which originally was intended more, I think, for the non-residential. So if you had a lot, you know, that was for non-residential purposes, but you hadn't built anything on it, you know, there was zero impervious area, you would potentially get, you know, if you based it on measured impervious area, they'd potentially have zero bill. So the idea of the minimum ERU was set up so that, you know, that half ERU, so that, you know, you could have a 20-acre property that, you know, had no impervious area on it, they would get no, no bill. Or there's some, you know, we decided that they, they had to pay some costs for the stormwater services around their property, and that, that level was set at the half ERU. I don't know, you had anything else you wanted to say on that?
No, no. The half ERUs is, we're trying to treat everybody the same. So the half ERU, if we're going to charge the half ERU for vacant, non-residential lots, the thought was we have to do the same to the vacant residential lots. So that's the way we assumed going in. And then the, the simplification was that we were flat rating all single-family residential properties, and that's.
That's my question. But, but you've been showing us examples where a property owner has two lots next to each other, and one has the house on it, and one has the backyard in it.
Right.
And so, we're not considering those, those are considered as two different lots?
That's, that's the way that they're set up right now.
And so he's going to get billed for two?
He's going to get billed for one, one ERU for the lot that the dwelling unit's on, and he would be billed a half of ERU for the lot that's undeveloped.
So is that, isn't that evaluating density? Or you're, what you're saying is that you're supplying the standard to those two lots? Maybe if I'm, if I understand what I'm saying.
We're applying, applying the minimum charge for the vacant lot.
And the minimum?
And the flat rate on the multiple lot.
Okay. And Diane Marlin?
I get the rationale now. Thank you for explaining. But my last question was, when an entity that owns multiple properties gets a single bill, will they still get an itemized, will their bill be itemized so they can see what each individual property is producing or costing them, or?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, there'll be a breakdown?
Breakdown.
Charlie, it's my.
Yeah, okay, so, so I think we have to make a distinction here between a residential lot that is sitting there empty and could be built on, and the, the residential lot that's being used as part of a, you know, somebody's backyard, for example. And, and I'm going to go on the, on the, think, think of it this way, since we're not doing it based on size, we didn't use the size classification of, you know, small, medium, large.
Right.
And we went with one-size-fits-all. Somebody with, say, two small lots, might be, you know, and that second lot is the half ERU, is going to pay one and a half times more than somebody with a single large lot that might actually be?
Bigger.
Bigger than the lot and, or lot and a half. So I think it really, it's based on, on use. If you've got somebody sitting with an empty lot somewhere that they're going to build a house on down the road, that's one thing. If you've got somebody who's got a small lot, and they've got a half, you know, a second parcel of some kind where they've got the garage, or their backyard, or their garden, or whatever, I think, I think, you know, because we don't have the small, medium, large situation, we can't charge for that half, half, half unit, because they're already paying. They're paying the one unit for their residence. To me, you know, I think we need to make a distinction that that's their residence versus their residence plus some, some parcel that they're, they're going to build a second house on. I think we're, we're overcharging people. Well, if we had, if we had small, medium, and large, then, then we wouldn't have to worry. We'd just use the total square acre, you know, total square footage.
We didn't use our wisdom to do that, so. Eric?
So I have a question that I guess is going to betray my ignorance of hydrology. On a vacant lot, that's just, you know, got stuff growing on it, but nothing built on it, where does the water go? Does it wind up in our storm sewer system, or does it just trickle down to the aquifer?
Some of it depends on the intensity of the rainfall. You know, for the smaller rainfall events, maybe under an inch, a lot of it will infiltrate into the ground, you know, if it's a, a grass lot. Your heavier storms, even grassed areas, and most people, you know, can observe it if they go out during a heavy rain, you'll get runoff off of even, you know, green areas, and it'll run off to the street and get into the city storm sewer system. So even green areas ultimately contribute runoff to the, the city storm sewer system. So.
Brandon, and then the mayor.
Yeah, Charlie, I see what you're saying, but unfortunately, we decided not to go down that path of making these judgment calls. I mean, you could look at the picture on the screen here and say, you know what? Maybe that lot is buildable. Maybe there's room to build a house there, and maybe someday they'll decide to sell that to someone else and, and build a house. But we can't make that judgment call of, is that, is that a buildable lot, or is that always just going to be their extended backyard space? I think unfortunately, we, we don't want to make those subjective calls. And we already decided we didn't want to do the small, medium, large thing, even though some of us felt that was fair and voted for that. We just decided one ERU for everybody, and I think since we've gone that way, we have to just stick with it.
Mayor Pressing?
Do the storm sewers, are they about buried in as deep as the sanitary sewers?
I mean, the answer is it kind of depends. In a lot, a lot of cases, the storm sewers are shallower, you know, because they're not having to collect, you know, water from the basement, you know, of the houses. So generally, storm sewers are, are shallower. Now, the exception to that is, you know, sometimes the large storm sewer trunks, you know, for example, there's a big, I think it's an 84-inch diameter storm sewer that runs down Anderson Street, kind of from the south side of Urbana, going up north to the Boneyard Creek, so it runs a real long distance. And some of those larger diameter sewers that kind of collect all the water from the neighborhoods and convey it to the, the creeks or the rivers around, sometimes those get pretty deep because they're having to run a long distance. And obviously, these are gravity systems, so their pipes are laid out of slope, you know, with it having to go deeper the further it goes. So some, some of the sewers, storm sewers around town could actually be deeper than the sanitary, but generally, as a rule of thumb, no, the storm sewer system is shallower.
Do we have the same kind of problem with the trees?
Well, the, the difference is with the storm sewer system, not many houses have lateral connections to them. You know, a lot of the things that are connected up to the storm sewer system are the inlets and the manholes in the street that collect the water, you know, the rectangular grates. So not many houses have, you know, storm lateral connections, so we don't see as, as many problems with it. The ones that do, you know, they might have a basement sump pump or something connected to it. I mean, they, they could experience the same problem, but they're just a lot less frequency with the number of, of houses that actually have storm laterals. In fact, it's usually the newer houses that have storm laterals, or sump pumps are hooked up to the, the storm sewer. And that's usually the new plastic pipe, which we don't have the problems with the roots getting into the, the pipe joints with the new plastic pipe that they're using.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie?
Let me add one more thought to my comment here, which I meant to include. If you had a, say, two small lots, you know, where the house is on, on one lot, and the backyard is in the other, for the, for example, that person could basically join those properties, a single, single piece of property, and then they'd pay one bill, you know, one, one, one unit. And so I think that the, the bad publicity that you will get from billing a handful of people for a half unit here is not worth, is not worth it. I mean, it's one thing when you've got a business and a parking lot that clearly is, has an impact on the storm system. It's another when you look at somebody with a small additional lot that's never going to be built, and they could have joined to their property with some paperwork and, and legal stuff. I just don't think it's worth the, the time. I, I just don't think it's worth the, the time and effort to, to chase that down. And, you know, Brad, how many pieces of, how many properties like this are we looking at? I mean, what's the total revenue here?
Do you have a feel for that, Doug?
We can, we can find that out and pass that back to you at the next, have Brad bring it back to the next council meeting.
I don't think it's a huge number.
It's not, it's not a large number.
I mean, are we looking at a dozen, two dozen, a hundred?
Yeah, it's not a hundred, but it's more than a couple of dozen. It's probably, well, probably two to three dozen.
Two to three dozen. I, I'd say it's just not worth the bad publicity, and we should just charge those people one and, one unit and not be done with, and be done with it. That's, that's my feeling.
You're talking about residential?
Residential, yes, just residential.
Then, since this is a conversation which asks for council recommendation or action, is there anybody who wants to make a motion? Charlie Smythe?
Yeah, I'll make a motion approving all of the staff policies that, that are in line with the sanitary district billing policy. And, and I'll, I'll hold the, the residential additional piece separate for a separate motion.
All right.
Second?
Okay, it's been motion, we have a motion by Charlie and seconded by Diane. Other discussion on that motion? Charlie, yes?
I'll, I'll abstain on this one, because my guess is that my property would be affected by it.
Well, everybody's got properties that can be affected by this, by this fee, so...
Dennis?
Yes.
It, the motion sounds like a motion for action, and again, a reminder, you are in the committee of the whole, and not a council meeting.
Okay. Well, some of, some of these are, does this require an ordinance, or is this just simply, this is a sta, this is a staff-level direction to approve this, so?
So we don't need a motion, we just are going to direct staff?
You can direct, just direct staff.
Direct, we're directing staff to...
To provide information, that's all, this is an information exchange as opposed to an action meeting.
Okay.
Unless you want to have something moved on to the council meeting for next week.
No, but we, we have, when, when these kinds of things have come up before, we have, it's basically directing staff to go ahead and finish a policy or do a policy, we're just...
For subsequent presentation.
For subsequent presentation, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's what we're doing here.
Yeah, that's what we're doing here.
It didn't sound like that.
Yeah, sorry, I think there's a, ultimately, there's something else that has to come to us, right, for final approval on all of this, or not? Or have we already done that? Yeah, well, you guys have to sort that out, then, but, but we've done lots of these kinds of things without having to go to council.
As long as you're asking, basically directing either the assembly of information, or the, that somebody take care of drafting a policy, that will then be considered, you know, that's fine, but if you're asking for a vote to take, to, to make or approve a policy, or a contract, or something like that, I'm not, I don't believe that this is the appropriate meeting to do that.
Okay, let me, so this is, yeah, so, Brad and Doug, did, when we approved the sanitary district, or the stormwater fee and, and stuff, we approved a whole series of things that went with that, right?
Yeah, these are kind of, I guess, not necessarily included in the orders, these are kind of technical billing questions that have to do kind of with the, I guess, the managing and grouping of the data more.
Yeah, this is just like the mechanics of how we're going to actually get the bill out. So we have, we have to make some decisions, and we want to make you guys make the decision.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, I mean, I'm perfectly well, well, it's perfectly fine to send this to council for, for approval of the motion, too, but if, if that makes you happy, we can do it that way, too.
If you're voting on whether you're going to tax or impose a fee on, on, on some kind of a lot, and all, then I think that would have to be at a council.
Okay, well, then I'll, then I'll, then I'll, then my motion is, as it stands, directed to send it to council for recommendation for approval, then. We'll just do it that way, then.
Okay, so we've got Charlie, and, do we have a second on that? Diane Marlin? Are you, is that appropriate for you, Diane? Okay. Eric Jacobson?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make a comment that, if it turns out that I have to pay a half ERU for my background, for my backyard, I, well, well, I will, I will not make a fuss.
All right. So, so returning to this conversation about the three suggestions that we're now recommending, perhaps, to be sent to city council, are those in favor? Can you get by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So these will be, these will be considered by city council. Charlie Smythe?
My second motion would be to answer the other, the other policy issue, which is to, to not charge residential second lots that are used as, as, in, in continuity with their existing property, any additional fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, I think, I think that's one that would have to be referred to council, because again, you're setting a policy.
Absolutely. Which you indicated, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. Seconded by Heather Stevenson. Okay, comments? Yes, Brandon?
Yeah, I think I'm going to vote no on this one. I just think, again, that if someone owns two lots, they know they've owned, they own two lots, they know they're paying an extra property tax bill, and they know that they chose to do that to, to have a wonderful big green spacer backyard, and that that was something they were willing to spend money on to buy a second lot. I don't think that people would be surprised, and I don't think that those two or three dozen people would, that there would be some negative, negative feeling from them. I think they know that they've invested in buying the neighboring lot to add to the value of their home and their, and their green space. And I think that using the same rule for them as we already are for everybody else is probably the cleanest, so that we don't have to get into a weird judgment call of, with, with residences or with other institutions about, oh, is this extra little sliver, you know, just, just an extra piece that should be rolled into the, to the original bill you're paying, or is it really a lot that will be built separately? I think the judgment calls there are too sticky to wade into it, and, and that these people will know that they own two lots, and that the fairest way is for them to pay for each of the lots they own.
Okay, any other discussion? Mayor Pressing?
But I think there's a real problem when you start making exceptions. A very huge problem.
Yeah, I, I agree with...
Eric Jacobson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I agree with the sentiment that the mayor expressed, and also with the view that, that, that Brandon made, and, and, you know, I will come back to council, and I will, I'm prepared to take heat from our, from our people who own great big houses and great big properties, and, and want to nitpick about this extra half ERU.
They're going to nitpick anyway, so I don't know what difference.
All right, are we still talking about it, or do we want to make a, take a, take a...
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Mr. Motion?
My motion was not to charge for residential lots in continuity with existing property, and leaving a distinction... Leaving a distinction for, for lots that are on speculation that will be built on. You know, I, those, to me, that's a distinction that can be made, but when somebody's using it as their backyard, or their, a continuity of their property, I think one bill is sufficient.
Okay. Those in favor of that recommendation, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. I think that's three. Those, those opposed?
No.
One, one, two, I think it was four.
No.
All right, so it fell. All right, well, thank you for the conversation, that was a good conversation.
Well, now you can do a motion the other way.
Well, we're still on the topic until I change, I say we're not, so I mean, are you going to? All right. Seeing no further discussion...
We need a motion, then.
To do what?
To accept it as is.
To accept recommendation number three.
Okay. We did. We did that in the first, in the first motion. Yes, we did all three.
And then he was going to make an exception?
Then he was, yes, and then he was offering an exception in the sense of consolidating residential lots. Okay. All right. Now this takes us to item number eight on the agenda, ordinance number 2012-112, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of the right-of-way. This concerns Heart Vascular Institute shuttle bus drop-off at Church Street between Kohler Avenue and Orchard Street. Bill Gray, are you going to make a presentation?
I will.
Thank you.
Hopefully, the memo was self-explanatory, but just to go over a few of the highlights, Caro with part of their Heart Vascular Institute project would like to have a drop-off pickup location within city right-of-way on Church Street. Per typical requests of this sort, where there's an encroachment in, in the public right-of-way, we've had a license agreement, which is attached in the packet. License agreement outlines in those pages the terms and conditions for such a facility in our right-of-way, and because it is encroaching in the right-of-way, there will be an annual fee that, that Caro would pay to the city, and that would be adjusted annually. There's an ordinance attached recommending the mayor and clerk sign the license agreements, and I'll entertain any questions you may have. There's other similar such license agreements with Caro, just for a little background, they have some electric duct banks where there's annual fees, and licensing on Church Street from near the Water Company is west of Lincoln Avenue to the Heart Vascular Institutes, and also on Kohler Avenue, South University Avenue, there was electric duct banks south of the tracks. So there's some history of similar encroachments, encumbrances in our right-of-way.
Good conversation. Heather Stevenson?
I'd move, we send ordinance number 2012-112 to council with the recommendation for approval.
Second. Seconded by Howard Lewis. Conversation, Charlie, and then Jake.
Yeah, quick question, Bill. Can the CUMTD use these drop-offs, or is it just wrong size and all that?
Yeah, it, the geometry isn't for a bus.
Okay.
They do have a shuttle bus now, it does meet their small shuttle buses. Not a big MTD bus, no.
Okay, okay. And do, do we charge the MTD when they build a, you know, sort of into the right-of-way?
We don't charge an annual, well, they're a, they're a public agency, they, in some cases, they may help pay for that bus drop-off now, for, if we widen the road, but to answer your question, no, we don't license MTD.
Okay, thanks.
Eric? I would only note that the footprint of this looks, bears a suspicious resemblance to a roundabout, so perhaps this will satisfy anybody who must vote for a roundabout.
Here we go.
I've, I've, I've got a question, Bill, for you. It indicates that this turnout, or what's it called, drop-off, the drop-off, I'll call it a turnout, is immediately east of the proposed shuttle bus, is, let's see, it's, it's immediately next to the...
No, just kidding.
Digestive health facility?
Drop-in.
Drop-off as well, is that correct?
Yes.
So on the map, if I look at the map that you gave on Exhibit A, is that drop-off, the one that's immediately to the east, and it's indicated by dotted lines?
Correct.
So these are basically right next to each other?
Correct.
And how will people know which is used for which, or is it doesn't matter to anybody?
I'm not familiar with what signage will be used, but I, I suspect that there'll be pretty adequate signage, so that the patient, or what have you, the person tending to someone would know which door...
I mean, they're right next to each other, and it's going to be easy to, okay, I'm just noticing that these things are right on top of each other practically.
The one farthest down will be the, it's digestive health.
Digestive health.
And the other one will be the...
Well, that's what we know, but will anybody who's driving down the street know that?
It says digestive health.
There's signage.
All right, I believe it. It's my question, thank you. All right, is there a motion? You did, didn't you? I'm not paying attention. Any more discussion? Right. Those in favor, please, forwarding this to council with approval, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That goes to council. All right. The last item on the, on the list is number nine, a motion to drop consideration of a roundabout at Race and Windsor. And this is by the mayor. The mayor, do you want to present this?
Um, yes, I think we've given this pretty thorough study, we've heard from the public. It's just not the appropriate site for a roundabout.
We do have one individual who'd like to come forward and speak at the time, and that's Gary Zico. Please come forward, Gary.
Surprise, surprise.
Make it quick.
Patiently waiting in the background.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Make it a quick, make it a quick roundabout.
Gary Zico, 506 West Vermont in Urbana. Yeah, I appreciate all the time and effort that the city staff and the mayor, city council, and residents have put into considering an issue of roundabout at Windsor Race, and I understand wanting to bring some closure to this issue, but I'd like to make a few comments before this is done. I know one of the things that's been mentioned a lot is the cost, and the, of course, the near-term costs are going to be higher. One thing that hasn't been considered is the cost of replacing signals, if signals were put there. Every 20 years or so, which is a little bit out of the timeframe of the studies that have been done, $200,000 plus for something like that. And this would be completely eliminated if a roundabout were put in here or someplace else. So that's something to keep in mind. Cost of serious savings, serious injuries and fatalities, these are included in the positive benefit cost ratios that were calculated in reports that have been done. There's also the potential savings from a road diet at Windsor between Race and Philo for its reconstruction and maintenance over 20 years. And I think that dropping a roundabout at Windsor and Race for consideration before knowing something about the cost of, cost savings of doing that is, is a bit premature. So I'd certainly like to hear if there has been some figures done about that, to see if that would partially or totally compensate for the added cost. There's been mentioned tonight, concern about taking land from Clock Lindsey Village. When Mayor Jim Brannad was here a couple of years ago from Carmel, Indiana, he pointed out that roundabouts are very flexible, unlike your rectangular intersections, they can be moved around a bit. And I've actually had some contact with Mark Johnson of MTG Engineering in Madison, who thinks a roundabout could likely be designed to have little or no impact on Clock, Clock Lindsey Village's lands. So that's something also to keep in mind. Truck traffic was mentioned, matter of roundabouts designed with a truck apron have no problems at all with truck traffic. Glens Falls, New York, I've showed you a video from there already, has lumber trucks going right through downtown on a single-lane roundabout, and it works fine. And the fire chiefs and the police chiefs are very happy with the roundabout. Here's a quote from article, "Chico, California built a roundabout right in front of its fire station with the full participation of its emergency personnel. The result was an improvement in emergency response," according to Chico Fire Chief James Berry. So they've been putting them right on fire stations with big, long trucks. Roundabouts and senior drivers, I've already mentioned, the AARP endorses roundabouts over civilized intersections for the safety reasons I've mentioned many times. Exit from Clock Lindsey Village, I understand that this is a concern. I showed two weeks ago, a very similar situation at Mount Horeb with a driveway just like they have on Clock Lindsey Village. People I talked to said there was no problem with that. One thing to keep in mind, that if you do a road diet, you now have one lane to cross. You then have a refuge in that center turn lane, and then you have a lane to merge into. So you have one lane to deal with at a time. Right now, to make that left turn, you have four lanes that you have to cross and merge. So, from that perspective, this really isn't a matter of speculation. I mean, the way to do this would be to collect data from other similar roundabouts and do traffic modeling, and you find out is this going to work or not. I mean, this is not, you know, rocket science, it's roundabout science, and there are tools to figure that out. The final thing is opposition, and national research has shown that a majority, a strong majority usually opposes the first roundabout in any community. And this is from a study that was done, I'll quote a section, "A major impediment is the negative perception held by some drivers and elected officials. Drivers may be skeptical or even opposed to roundabouts when they are proposed. However, opinions quickly change when drivers become familiar with roundabouts. A study by the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety in Communities Where Roundabouts Replace Traffic Signs, Stop Signs, or Signal Control Intersections found that 31% of drivers supported the roundabouts before construction, compared with 63% shortly after. Follow-up surveys conducted in these communities after roundabouts had been in place for more than one year found that the level of public support increased to about 70% on average one year later."
You have one minute, Mr. Zico.
Mayor Jim Bernard in Carmel says he's had 90% support for the roundabouts there. So this is, this is why you need to have policies. So, this is, this is why you need to have policies, you need to have progressive states have policies that say you must consider a roundabout here, because if you're going to put a roundabout in Urbana, the first roundabout at a major intersection, it is not going to be popular. There is no, if you wait for a public uprising for roundabouts in Urbana, they're not going to happen. So, there's going to have to be a time to decide that, yeah, we need to do this based upon engineering, based upon what the planners say, and if that makes sense to go ahead with a roundabout, and it's going to make probably majority of people unhappy initially and happier later on, and if we don't do that, we're going to not have the benefits of roundabouts, their safety, convenience, sustainability and aesthetics. Thank you.
That's for Gary Zico. Okay, thanks very much, Gary. All right, discussion. Diane Marlin?
Well, I would move that we drop consideration of the roundabout at Race and Windsor, and also to direct staff to drop plans for the additional study of a Windsor Road Diet and that implicated a two-lane roundabout.
Second.
And I'd like to speak to that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Speak to it.
We've spent a lot of time on this issue, so I will just say there are two compelling factors for me, and the first is the initial cost, and I know we can look at long-term costs, but we have to be concerned with the short-term costs, and we, the estimates that we received last year pointed out that the roundabout would cost at least another $850,000 above what traffic signals at this location would be, and we, bottom line is we can't afford it at this time. And secondly, for a while now, I've come to look at this roundabout as something, as a roundabout looking for a reason, and I think if we're going to be retrofitting intersections in this city with roundabouts, number one, we need to have some clear criteria to use to approach that, and number two, it should be to solve a problem, whether it's high fatalities or collisions or unbearable congestion, and we don't have any of that at that location. So, for me, it was, and third was the, the considerable angst and stress and uncertainty that this discussion was causing everyone, and so I think it's, it's time, and I'm happy to support this motion.
Other conversation? Eric?
Yeah, I certainly think that the, in the safety considerations, you know, we have to include the health costs of people's anxiety, so I concur that we can close the discussion down.
Okay, Charlie Smythe?
Yeah, I'm disappointed that we, that we can't find a location to demonstrate the safety, the time and, and fuel efficiency that a modern roundabout can, can do. You know, originally, we, we picked a really great location for a, a new, for new construction, Olympian and, and North Lincoln is the obvious place to be doing that, and, and we've run up against some of the same issues there. I mean, that is the place to put something where people can learn it and experience it in a, in a non-residential situation. You know, we have, Champaign-Urbana have some small ones in residential areas, they were perfectly fine in those, in those residential areas, but it's not the same thing as a, as a modern roundabout for demonstrating these, these issues. One of the things that's come up here, and, and I'm hearing in both what Diane said and what Helen Satterthwaite said, and I really appreciate this, and that's that we continue with this as a four-way stop, because we, you know, and here, here's my concern, I can't support a traffic signal at this intersection. On my way over here tonight, I was nearly hit by a person on a cellphone. They basically ran a stop sign as I was coming to the intersection, they, they ran a stop sign, they were yakking on their phone, left hand, so he couldn't see me because he was turning left, and here's his phone in his left hand, okay? And I'm right there on top of him, I saw him, I came to a stop, he cuts in front of me and I scream at him. You know, so, so, you know, I can only imagine what will happen at this intersection where you've got five lanes of traffic to cross as you're going from north to south or south to north, and we have lots of pedestrians, bicyclists and, and runners here especially using this intersection. I can just imagine what's going to happen to a pedestrian who thinks it's safe to cross, and somebody doing 55 miles an hour, and yes, you know, we know how fast people go on, on Windsor when they can, when they can do it, and they're going to be doing 55 miles an hour yakking on a phone, and they're going to blow through this, a red light, and they're going to take out a pedestrian, or a runner, or a bicyclist, who thought they were in the right. And so, because signals are not safer than four-way stops, and, and because this is such a heavy pedestrian and bicycle crossing area, I will not support a signal at this intersection, and I hope we stick with the cheap and safe alternative of a four-way stop. You know, it's ironic that we can't afford the rebuilding of Windsor itself, and, you know, ideally, and one of the things that, one of the reasons I, I'm, you know, this is around, you know, you think this is a roundabout looking for a, a solution or something, you know, the real way to design Windsor from start to finish would have been as a, as, you know, three or five nodes of roundabouts and a, and a three-lane, two or three-lane cross-section, depending on where you are, that kept the traffic flowing, you know, we need the signals at those other, to allow for this buildup of traffic, and the four-way stop to me works just fine, and I'll continue to support just that here. But I do look forward to trying to figure, I, I'm not looking forward to trying to figure out how to pay for the rebuilding of Windsor, which is going to cost millions of dollars that we don't have. Thank you.
Anyone else? The mayor?
I just wanted to say that QOTs adopted standards for considering roundabouts, so that's a new thing, and, so I think it's just a question of finding where the best location is.
Yeah, Lincoln and Olympian.
Anybody else? Brandon?
Yeah, I, I, I'm glad that we'll be continuing to, with future intersections and future new roads, consider roundabouts, and yet that even at the QOTs level, that's our policy. It's a shame that we've spent so much time talking about intersections and roundabouts that didn't really, didn't really pan out and weren't really feasible because of special populations and things that use these, these first couple of intersections we've talked about, and I do hope that someday we'll have a roundabout somewhere in our area that people can visit and learn how to use safely, and I think overcome some of those public relations barriers that Gary mentioned, that, you know, the fact that at first when you haven't used one, it does seem like a scary thing, but after you come to drive through it or cross it or, or walk through it, you, you learn how to use it and you can see the benefits. So, I hope that someday we're there, I don't think this intersection is, is the good starting point.
Robert Lewis?
Well, I appreciate all the effort that went into it, I did learn something about roundabouts, and one of the things that I did learn, and I think we can all take to the bank, is the fact that technology and as it relates to the special population, it's not where it should be, and when it comes to signage and electric signs, it's not where it should be, and some of the things that we can look forward to is that technology catching up with where we are mentally about where we think we want to be, and I think that that's what I got out of it, just thinking through the process and recognizing that we do have a special populace that people are forgetting about, they get overwhelmed with this new concept and forget about the people that it really impacts, and it doesn't impact the normal person as much as it would, for example, a person in a wheelchair, or a person that can't walk very well, or the elderly. Face it, folks, we're all getting older, and we won't be able to walk, run, run by that stop sign very quick either, in the, in the near future, but I think the technology has to catch up to where we think we want to be, and when that happens, it's going to be a lot easier to make that case.
Okay, our, yes?
Again, I, I didn't hear it in the motion, but I'm sure the motion included a reference of the matter to the council for next week.
This was staff direction.
Hmm?
This was staff direction in the first place.
The motion was to drop the roundabout issue.
The consideration of a roundabout.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's no action for a roundabout pending, there's no need for motion, but if.
There is, there, there is, there's a study.
Yeah, but then you'd have to recommend to the council that the study terminate.
It was, it was, it was.
Yeah, but I don't think you, you can't take action on something in this meeting, being in a committee of the whole, you're meeting as a committee, not as the council.
Yeah, but we, we directed staff to provide, to get us data at committee.
I appreciate that, but what, but the motion was to cease, to, to.
Terminate.
Terminate the roundabout, and there were two parts to the motion, to terminate the discussion on the roundabout, which is an action item, and to terminate, I guess, funding for, for further study of the roundabout, which is an action item.
That's right.
Was it ever at council? I think we just kept it in committee because we wanted to report at the committee.
So, maybe we need to move this to council and make.
That's, that's my point, moving it to council, that's my only point.
And make the final decision.
Right, but it wasn't at council to begin with, is the question.
No, which is fine.
It's in committee right now.
There's nothing wrong with that.
So? Can we do something in a committee and say that we don't want the committee to?
But if, if you had plans to do further studies and now you're canceling the studies, that may be construed as an action item. I don't think anyone's going to nail you for it, the only issue might be.
Doesn't seem like it.
The only issue would be possibly an open meetings act question, because this is not a formally convened council meeting, it's a committee meeting.
Right, but it is something that is in committee.
If, if you're just simply as a committee deciding as a consensus to no longer pursue with it, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I think we're doing that.
Yeah.
So, what was the motion, I mean, do you want to reiterate, reiterate the motion, Diane?
I moved that we drop consideration of the roundabout at Race and Windsor and direct staff to terminate plans for additional study of the Windsor Road Diet and the two-lane roundabout that was connected with that.
All right, Charlie?
So, if this were a motion to table it indefinitely, it would go away too, at a committee level.
At, at the committee level, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the committee's not going to consider it.
Right, and, and I think that's the, the proper motion might be to table this indefinitely, blah, 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 the rest of your motion.
You could do it that way.
Yeah, and then it doesn't have to go to council.
So, that's clean?
Yeah.
Do you want to restate your motion then?
I move to table indefinitely consideration of a roundabout at Race and Windsor and direct staff to table indefinitely plans for additional study of Windsor Road Diet and the subsequent, and the attached two-lane roundabout.
Okay, there we go. Now, we could be legal perhaps. Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that's, that's, that's tabled. Seeing no further business, I call us adjourned.